...
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America. Add to the red color for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is approval of nets. Move the blue flag. Motion second to approve nets. Any approval discussion? If not, always in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Fans are approved. Approval of the agenda. In addition to the agenda, Commissioner Volga, if I include a request on the Fair Board for some additional funding, we'll put that under new business.
Motion to adopt is amended.
Set.
All right. Motion to approve the agenda as amended, all those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First up on our agenda is the burn ban discussion. I brought this up and put this on the agenda. Some concerned individuals were in my office yesterday, discussing this and asked if we'd have a discussion about our existing burn ban. And so I asked Sheriff Nelson and Chris Jager and Chief Waldecott to come in and discuss this, burn ban with us, give us any updates on the calls that have been going out, received, those kind of situations, and if we wanted to make any adjustments to that. So, Steve, do you have any updates from your department on how the calls have been going, or number of calls, or?
We haven't had as many lately.
Okay.
But, uh, we're just giving them from a case-by-case basis.
You think that changed after we made the changes to the burn ban to go up a level?
I don't know.
Don't know? No. Chris? Everything's still the same as far as statewide, countywide?
I haven't heard much updates from a lot of the, a lot of the other fire chiefs. I know I've talked to Sean a couple times. Beyond that, they get it day by day.
Chief, the, uh, I think a big improvement came with adding the high category to it, you know, when you guys last amended it back in earlier, it was a great one, whatever, a couple weeks ago. I think that was a bonus. The stuff that we've been going through now is either an actual fire that has to get put out, you know, accidentally or whichever. Mutual aid call here and there. And, uh, you know, when the ban goes active and the weather service satellites are watching, you know, we do respond to, if they're big enough and the satellites pick them up, you know, then we even go in with them too. But, um, as, as far as, uh, you know, just having that high category gained a lot of ground for, for a lot, I think, so.
You think that satisfied a lot of needs?
I think so, from what I've heard. Everybody, you know, I'm not gonna say everybody, but majority of the people that I've talked to adding that high category, you know, that's what a lot of them were looking for. You know, majority of last week was all in the high categories and there were a lot of days to burn there. And they were nice days to burn. You know, I, I, I don't think, uh, you know, some of the moderate days that we had weren't ideal for burning, so加上that high category, they really deal in the extra days. I guess that did, did some good, but.
Have we seen a change in the number of farmers that have called in their burns?
Yes.
More have, or?
They don't call, well, they've been calling them in, but they've also been calling and asking, okay, if they can burn or not, which our answer is check the website, but let's check the fire, maybe we don't have time to check every day. But, uh...
I don't see, it seems like they relay a lot more than us, or they have been, you know?
See if I have time, we'll tell them, yes, it's a, today, we had one call, yeah, you can go today because it's in the high category. But...
It was in the high today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the humidity was so much...
Yesterday was very high, but today was high, I believe.
Correct. Yesterday we had humidity levels in that twenty percent or under, and today there was upwards towards fifty percent, and I think that makes a big difference in how they adjust their range land fire index. So, uh, individuals here, uh, Mr. Dimwiddie, Mr. Friday, do you have anything that you'd like to share with the commissioner at this time?
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm kind of in between a rock and a hard spot here. I mean, I was, I was burning on a beautiful day, I didn't even know it was on that side of town, and, I mean, I hadn't heard about it, whatever. I'm out there burning on a Saturday, it smelled of rain, and you were out there with Sean.
Yeah, yeah.
Beautiful day was it?
It was, it was.
I didn't have anything on the place, I had my tractor and fire breaks around. My tractor sitting there, pickup sitting there with water and I'm burning, and all of a sudden, deputy shows up, jumps out. Kind of half crazy, I thought. And I said, uh, what's the issue? You got thirty-five, forty fires going here. I said, well, burning's flexible. But we gotta do, get the cropping. Next thing I know, another deputy is there in the fire truck with four firemen in it, and then an ambulance, and a whole shit, you know? And there was nothing could have possibly been wrong. You, you see through a little tiny slough that drowns out and it gets some grass, and yeah, it drowns out, and it grass grows in it, and it burned too, I mean, little tiny slough, nothing major. Beautiful day, I never even, I mean, there was no wind, no, nothing. And, well, you guys didn't put no fires out, you guys left, deputy left, the ambulance left, I stayed there and finished burning. No problems. Last week I get a, a summons to come to court yesterday to plead either guilty or not guilty to a class misdemeanor on something that is, has to be done in my case. I got eight hundred acres of flaxseed burning. You know, I mean, I got my tractors, I got my fire breaks in, I don't even, I didn't even dare go and do it, or burn, or not forget the letter. Because I can't go in there and take the plea deal and say, hey, I'll, whatever, you know, and have ninety days suspended, suspended, you know? What if I get another one? What if I should ever get another one? Only get hit with, I'm definitely gonna get thirty days, you know? I gotta get this crop in the ground, I can't go to FSA and say I couldn't do it because I had a clax rose. Can't go to my cropping chairs and say I didn't get a plan because I had a clax rose and I couldn't get it nerfed. I mean, it's just not working. It doesn't, not in every situation, it's the same as somebody driving by, like, big slough cattails on fire driving away. Well, not all doing that. Some of us have a legitimate reason we're out burning, and some of us are just trying to reclaim land that's been underwater and finally dry up enough where you can be into it. And it's, it's not working. Doesn't work for, you can't have a, you know, they set that thing, I think, later only at six o'clock in the morning? Well, look how windy it is right now, I wouldn't even light a fire right now. Because it's too windy today. It's high, you can burn, but today is a dangerous day to burn. A little common sense goes a long ways. And right now, there's none of that being used here. None. It, it doesn't work. You can't, you can't just say at six o'clock in the morning, it's gonna be a good burn day. There's no control there. I don't know where this map comes from, or who sets it up, but it's not gonna work.
Chris, where's the map come from?
Forestry Service puts the map out.
Out of Northquad?
Mm-hmm.
Bismarck.
Yep. When they check all, what I've been told is they check some of the end-on stations, the weather stations, for current conditions across the state, so. That's how they justify the fire index rating.
In my opinion, it helps significantly to go to high. Um, I think a lot of guys have gotten a lot of burning done, but I agree exactly with what Dave said, you know? Today's not a good day to go out and light a fire, we got, we got pretty high winds, you know, things, things can get away pretty quick in these types of winds, you know? And I, I, I know I talked to a number of the commissioners, uh, a number of weeks ago about this. That particular day I was talking to, I know Adam, I was standing in my grandpa's quonset, it was actively raining, and it was considered high that day because that's what the map said, you know? The map helps, going to high helps. It's still not perfect. Um, I think the commission dropped the ball big time by not having it at high in the first place. That was Sean Waldecall's recommendation, was to be at high in the first place. Me and my dad would likely not be sitting here because the incident that happened at my grandpa's farm was on high that day. We, we misread the map, and the deputy was on us really fast, you know? Had it been set at high in the first place like it was supposed to, a lot of these problems, a lot of these complaints that farmers are having, would have never been there. I, I think the commission dropped the ball. I spoke to, I've spoke to every one of the commissioners, and almost everyone says that they wanted it at high. There's five of you, most of you wanted it at high, it wasn't set at high. I guess, I don't understand that. Majority rules, if the majority wanted it at high, why wasn't it set at moderate in the first place? And that's not a rhetorical question either.
Well, it, it was set at, it included all the, the index, not just moderate, it was e- everything. Um, we put a burn ban in place, um, not to punish anybody, but to, to maintain safety for the public and for responders. Um, you know, and we don't, we don't do it for, we can't do a piecemeal by this section or this township, it's, you know, it was a countywide, and it was based a lot on what the state's recommendation. The state was in a high elevated state at that particular time. You know as well as anybody here how dry it is up there, you know, and how quickly things can get away from anybody at any particular time. And yeah, we, we sat around here, all five of us together, and made that decision. And that was back on the April thirteenth. Or, no, it was, uh, March thirtieth, April thirteenth, we adjusted it. Based on the, the changing conditions and the issues that we felt, and we wanted to give a better opportunity to producers to go out there and do that burning at those particular times. Um, and that's why those adjustments were, were made, is because of the issues that, that we were seeing and the complaints that we were rece, were receiving. But based on the recommendations that we had at the time and the information that we have, that's how the decisions were made.
Well, the most experienced person in here when it comes to fire safety and fire danger, his recommendation wasn't followed. I, there was still other...
There were more than just Sean in the room, though.
I, I did.
We had, we had all of the role fire chiefs here, we had a very robust discussion. We talked, and we talked, and we talked in circles, to be honest. And at the end of it, we kind of all decided that, and I'll talk from my perspective, Cole, you know, I can only speak from my perspective, not everybody else up here. This is the first time we ever tried to use this graduated scale system. Previous to this, it was always just a blanket burn ban, and I hated those, because then it never gave us any flexibility to go out and do anything. And so we tried to do this, this system where we had at least a graduated skill, so we would have some days we could get some work done. We set it at moderate, we should have set it at high, I don't disagree, but at the time, we didn't know how many days were gonna be moderate, how many days were gonna be low, how many days were gonna be high. It was quickly realized, within a week, that high was re, high days were reasonable days to burn, and that's when we made the adjustment. I, I, I'll, I'll fess up to that, I was, I was wrong too, and I think, I, I felt that we should start lower and move higher as we saw how many days were in those categories to try to give people as much flexibility as we could, because at the same time, we, you know, like you said, we shouldn't be burning on today, even though it is high, I realize that, but those very high, those, those red flag days, none of us, all of us thought we shouldn't be burning, but to be blatantly honest, I've seen smoke fly on our red flag days. So, we, we, we have to have something in place to try to, at least try to protect stuff, and, and, but at the same time, still work with people to try to allow the things that need to get done, get done. And it, we're never gonna put a perfect system in place, I, I realize that, then we're gonna have to try to modify to try to get it closer to perfect. And, and I don't know how to fix what's already occurred, I don't know if we can, but all I can say is we can try our best to try to make it better.
What do we do with, like, you know, I mean, turning people, farmers into criminals for, for trying to do what they gotta do out there? I mean, that day I burned, I don't know what that, I don't even, was it moderate, was it high, I don't even know what it was.
It was high, it would have been high that day.
You showed me that map.
I thought it was high that day.
Yeah. Okay, it was high that day. Well, high's good now, but I got a ticket back then, and nobody put a fire out, you know? Uh, actually, Steve, the deputy didn't know what the hell to do out there, he called you that day, he was out there, he called you at the phone. He didn't know what to do, and he didn't know if he should keep the ambulance coming and the fire truck coming, he didn't know. And I was like, I don't think you really need the ambulance out here or the fire truck, I said. And he was rattled, I mean, it was like, okay? And all of a sudden, I get a, I got a, a face in a class misdemeanor for burning on a day that was high, and now today, high is fine, you made adjustments, why don't you adjust? I don't wanna go to court. I don't want, I don't care what the fine, but I don't want a class misdemeanor. It's a criminal offense, your driver's license, if they do a driving check on you, they look at that. If you wanna get your crop, you're just insurance, they, they watch all that shit. That's, you know, Scott's sixty years old over here, he's never really, you know, all right, I was a parker, now he's got a family, it's not necessary, you guys. It's just not right.
Deputy said that, you know, I'm just doing my job, and he was. But so was I. This is a normal farming practice. I went, two days later, I went to South Dakota to pick up a celery for him, and on the way back, I was never out of the sight of a fire, never out of the sight from South Dakota all the way up. Every farmer burns in the spring, they do it, they're gonna do it next year, they did it back, my mother said my great-grandfather did it. It's what you do, it's a normal farming practice in Ramsey County. And now I got a misdemeanor because my dad said I'm eighty-four years old, I can't believe I lived and see this. I would never direct that happen. Now I'm a criminal, you know? I sat in court the other day, one guy took a poker stick and beat the hell out of a guy and put him in the hospital, he had stitches. Another one beat his wife up, put her in the hospital.
And the woman beat up a guy with a fire stick.
Yeah.
And a hammer.
And then, and she... They got, they got misdemeanors, and I'm sitting beside them, and I got a misdemeanor for burning up two-acre cattail slough.
No, on our own property.
On our own property!
On our own property of all things. We don't have some property rights here too. I understand you guys are trying to protect, you know, other people's property and all of that, but I can tell you that this, where this incident happened, my grandpa owns the whole section there, there, there's not a road, there's nothing there, we were out in the middle of a whole plowed section, that's one mile by one mile of nothing but our ground.
Granted, the deputy was right, I mean, he, you know, he was just doing his job, but so was I. This is what we do for a living. This is how we do it, that's all we've always did it.
And if anybody in here is farming, the only way to get rid of flaxseed is to burn. You have to, there's no other way, you can nail it.
I had a disagree today. I, I had flaxseed last spring, I had to get rid of it, and it was a nightmare, I had to burn it. I, I understand where you're coming from.
And, and your job is tough, I mean, it is, it's, to find the right mixture is...
I was thinking your guys' situation, if it would have been in high.
At the time, it would have been fine, yeah.
Yes, but it's exactly right. You know, and you're coming up penalizing us, and we're tax base, I mean, we're the ones that pay the taxes, the law tax, we're the ones that give the money to operate, and we're the ones that are paying for those galas that four cases opened and four different attorneys, and she was getting another piece of paper to get another attorney? Tax, uh, didn't she? She wanted to get a court, uh, another sheet to get another attorney for the next case.
And she got the same setup, we did.
Yeah. And, I mean, it's just not right.
It's gotta be great, you're sitting there. It was.
Come out and slap my hands, tell me to straighten my shit out, that's fine, I, I get that daily at home, I mean, I'm used to it, but come out there and see I'm doing things right, and, John, you made a comment, oh, there's nothing here, you're doing, you're here, and you're doing this right, and, and that was a perfect day to burn it, the smoke would go all straight up in the air, and it was burning nice, and then, yeah. I'm getting, and then I get a ticket in the mail, and I'm like, what the hell?
So, so what I gather, sitting up here, both of you individuals, if it was to where it was just a fine and not a misdemeanor, it wouldn't have been near the issues what we're having.
We wouldn't be sitting here talking, you know?
Right. It's a misdemeanor that you're having the issues with, it's not that, now that it's at high.
That's what sent him off the other day, he's sitting there in court, and all of a sudden, we're sitting there with all these other...
This guy that was charged with domestic assault, it was a male, fifties, I don't know, some, some, and, you know, Judge Bowdy says, well, you're guilty of, or you're, you're not guilty, you're charged with domestic assault, a B misdemeanor, and, wait a minute here, my dad has a court summons for a B misdemeanor, I, I just, I got a problem with that, I got a big problem with that.
Let, let's clarify something, Cole, is that we don't set the penalty regulations or the, the charges, that's the state legislature that...
I scanned that, but you did set the policy that warranted it.
We, we, we did, and it was based upon the, the information at the time that we made it, and amazing what we thought...
But then the policy should have probably been changed, well, you guys knew what they were gonna burn these sloughs, you knew they were gonna burn them.
And we did change it, Scott.
It's just we can't retroactively change what occurred.
No, I, I...
And, and I, I'm frustrated by that, on my part.
I was thinking of going back.
And, and, and we moved it to high, we actually have, and I was looking at other counties around us, we have a less restricted burn ban than most of the counties around us. Kevlar Counties is a blanket ban. Benson County has, can only burn moderate and below. So ours is actually more open than the other ones, I'm not saying that's right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm just saying that that's what the case is.
Well, and that's, I think that was kind of what finally decided where we set it in the first place, was we asked, you know, what are all the counties around us, where do they put theirs, so that was one of them.
Yeah, Nelson County at the time was moderate and below, Benson was moderate and below, so we just kinda started in that range, and yeah, you were...
We all learned from our mistakes, and that's fine, and let, let's just move on, but in the future, this has gotta change.
No, and I, and I don't think anybody gave a history with that.
Hey, let's go back and go on our meeting dates, was it the sixth of April that we made the decision to put the burn ban on, or was it the twentieth?
We, we, we had once, on the thirtieth of March, we had a special meeting, and, and then we adjusted it.
Well, that, that was for the blanket ban, right? That was on the end of March.
Blanket ban.
Right.
We, we had a, a change on the thirteenth of April, to adjust it to a high. And then we changed it again on May fourth to include very high and extreme and red flag.
Yeah, and, and everybody that's in this room, and I understand why everybody's upset, that all of those violations happened prior to us changing it, and it's, there's nothing that I can do that'll make you not mad anymore.
No, we're not, we're not mad, I, I'm not, anyway, I, I'm not mad, I'm just, it just, this didn't work. And, and your objections are probably fine, and it's a tough job, I'm not, I'm bound aboard too, it's not, it's not easy, but it didn't work. And, and now we're misdemeanors out there all over the place, and I know that wasn't your intention, but that's what happened, Steve.
Bo, Bo, can you explain the, the fine and the, the process?
I can, so I'm Bo Cummings, I'm the state's attorney, and you probably see my name on this paper that you got. So, our standard recommendation is something called a deferred imposition of sentence. That means as long as you don't break the law in the next ninety days, this will fall off your record like it never happened. What we have done, and what our standard recommendation has been, is to ask for a fine, no jail time, and if you can remain law-abiding for the ninety days, it disappears like it never happened. I understand that it's very upsetting for you gentlemen to have to sit in there with those same people. You know, that's something we could talk to the court about. If we have more burn ban cases, let's set them at the end of the day. I know that you were doing your job, the deputy is doing their job, but you have to understand that I'm also doing my job. County Commission set the law, and it's my job to prosecute the law. I don't think any of you are bad guys, my father-in-law's a farmer, I know exactly what it's like, I've been out there in the fields, I've worked the fields, I helped them burn. The problem is, when it happened, it was a violation of the law.
Yeah. And, and can I ask a good question, Bo, I was gonna ask Nelson, but I'll, you probably have a better idea. How many, how many, how many violations do you have? How many burn ban violations are there?
That's a good question, we're in the double digits, uh, we have forty reports, uh, we are not selectively enforcing it, the, the direction to the deputies is to go around, you know, if it's a day when we're not allowed to be burning, we're going to each of those sites, and that's time-consuming for the sheriff and his department. And, and I think the county commission has made the right call, we've added some flexibility, we're trying to figure it out, there is no perfect system. And that being said, I have been working with people, I've been talking with people, but there's a common misconception, and it's basically legal red tape, I can't talk to you about your case until you've been advised of your rights. You don't have a lawyer, I can't talk to you until the judge tells you what your rights are, because I don't want you to incriminate yourself. I know that's really frustrating for a lot of producers, and it's frustrating for me too, because I'm a man-to-man guy, I'd rather talk to you about what's going on than have to deal with all this crap.
I got, I got told by my lawyer yesterday to watch what I say in this. And not, uh, Sam and woman, do something, and, and our lawyer advised us to call you.
Who's your lawyer?
Your skills. And my, my, and I actually, I had a, I talked to the township lawyer too, and he represents, you know, the township facilitator. His recommendation was to call you too, so I mean, that, that's kinda interesting that you're saying you can call, but I'm not gonna talk to you, you know, because I had two lawyers whose advice was to go talk to you, so.
So, have you had your initial appearance in the court?
Yeah.
Yesterday?
Yeah.
So now I can talk to you, now that we've passed that first hearing? I'm happy to talk to you guys after the meeting, you wanna stick around?
You know, I'll, I'll always stick around too. I, I don't need to, I, I just, to me, it's, it's water under the bridge and...
But not just the ages, or so what, I guess.
Well, criminal, I'm criminal.
The thing is, Scott, it's gonna come off your record, it's not gonna be... The thing is, Scott, it's gonna come off your record. It's not gonna be.
I know, but it went on.
Yes, right. And I, I understand a hundred percent. My native cop too.
But let's not do it again. That's what I'm getting at. I'm fine with it. I'll live with it. Then ninety days, I'm fighting a robber bank and. But let's not do it again, you know?
I, I don't think, I don't think we can disappear with that. The one thing I would say, and, and the research I've done, and I don't know if my research is correct, so the state's attorney will have to correct me. Is, we can make it an infraction, correct?
No.
We can, no, it's set by the state legislature to be missed.
Okay, we're co-sentient.
So the minute we do any kind of over-advantage, that is what it is.
And, and that would have been something we could have done under the rule, right?
Possibly, but I was looking.
We do have an ordinance that.
Regardless of that, I, I was just looking at it because, because it looked to me like you could make it an infraction and then. After that first infraction, then a rule to a B misdemeanor. So you could just do a fine thing. But it's essentially what we're doing now anyway. But it's.
I've been told by several commissioners, I thought it was just gonna be an infraction. They didn't think there was gonna be any ramifications of it.
Well, and I, 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 I told you that. I misunderstood, I misunderstood the ramifications. I mean, in, in all honesty though, as long as you don't, it's still. An infraction technically because of the deferred imposition. But the, the question I had in this situation is specifically for your situation and like, like the flax. You know, that even if we, even if we do a burn ban in the future and we say high and below you can burn. There might not be a day that you can get higher or below and you still have to get that burnt off. So is there, is there a portion of the burn ban maybe we can add that would say, and I, this is where we got the, we have a fire chief sitting in the room. Where we could put something in there that says something to the effect of. On a day where the burn ban would be in place, but a controlled burn has to occur, that they can work with the rural fire department or something to make sure that it can occur. And if you give pre-approval or something of that nature.
And that would.
When it would be something with like flax straw or something that has to get off the field.
I, I don't want you to say it. You know, and we kind of crossed this road. Earlier, when this whole thing started, you know, about, well, we will write permits for certain people and, you know, this, that, or the other thing. I don't have time to write that big permits.
That was my question.
But number two. If I write you a permit or say, hey, yeah, go, in your case, go burn your flax straw. But then the wind does pick up. And then it burns down on your neighbor's house or whatever. That, that's not on you. I told you to go like that. You know, that, that comes back to me. And I, I won't have that.
My suggestion was. You guys, put the permits out and you make us prove that we have liability insurance. And then if we wanna burn on five sections, you charge us twenty-five bucks a section just to monitor, to cover expenses, whatever. You know, for what we put in the ground every day, it don't, I mean, that's like buying lunch, you know? I mean, some way of making this work, so. I, it, I can't go and tie up a fire department for a day with a fire truck sitting out there watching me burn flax straw. That's not right.
I'm not, I'm not saying that that's what I'm saying you should do. I'm just saying that if it was something where you could tell them so that they would know and they would approve or something. You know, they wouldn't sit out there with you. They would just know that you're doing it right.
Yeah, but I, I think the county should be the one that sells a permit if we're, you know, if we're about that.
Well, if it's something we can do. I mean, I don't even know if it's something we can or can't do, so.
You know, I mean, if we can come in here and go to the auditor's office and my burn bring it, write down what sections and show proof of insurance, and say, then it's on us. It's not on us.
I mean, that's a, you know, really, that's a reasonable idea. This is just my thought right off my head here. That's, that's a good theory. But then what happens to the guy that doesn't go by the permit?
Then you go hit him with this glass being misdemeanor.
You know, then. You know, I mean, if that's the route that everybody went to travel. Which whatever, I mean, if, if the county wants to dish out burn permits or, you know, if they can, if that's even a, a feasible deal. If they go and do that. And then you don't come and get a permit for the, the, you know, whatever, the section you're burning. Or the order that you're burning or whatever, you know, then, then what? You know, is that what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think farmers are gonna be pretty, you know, what, I, I'm gonna be pretty responsible about that. Because I don't want my building like so hot.
Right.
Because then I'll be doing a lot more than.
It's not an easy thing.
But I was just in a situation where.
It's not an easy thing.
It's.
Well. I, I just don't. Thirty of the March, we had to deal with a burn ban.
Uh?
Thirty of the March, we had to deal with a burn ban at the commission. You know, no moisture at all winter. I mean, we're not gonna have cattail sleuths after cattail sleuths. They're just a bonfire. I mean, they're just, oof.
Yeah, and we were having.
If you don't get thirty, forty feet away immediately, I mean, it's fire burn on your arms or your face or whatever. They get that hot that quick.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I, I just throwing some history out here on why we had to make a decision and try to control it somewhat.
Yeah.
Because it was happening before people were actually going on fire. A lot of this was just. Someone.
But we need to.
Outside and so we were.
We need to get through this. We need to work together. And we all think the high standard is working.
I think, I, I think you need to be better with the high and low things and, and, and maybe better with. Helping us get that information. And, and I don't know how to explain, explain that, but.
And a lot of guys just have a flip phone and, well, I don't know this stuff.
I got a brand, I got a brand phone, I can't work.
You know what I mean? Would it be helpful if we, like, went and talked to N D T C and, and had CSO, they could add that to their, what is it, six, six, two, one thousand or whatever that number is?
Yeah.
Something to that.
You know, I just, I, I think, just do your high and low things and, and let the chips fall where they may. And if it gets away on the guy, we, we have insurance for this and. We'll, we'll face the music when we, when we do something bad. I, I mean, that's all you can do at that point. Um, I don't think anybody's house has been burned down for burning cattail sleuths, has there?
No.
In our district.
Not in our district.
That's a good answer, Chuck. I like that answer.
It, it didn't happen.
Okay.
You know somebody.
We're not running around and proving magic though.
And Benson County, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you got, you got over there and.
Well, I, I, I like your high and low things. I think it just needs to be monitored better.
You, you, you need the information more ready, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and I think.
Something like maybe if we talked to the radio station and.
Well, no, no, no. Call up ten guys and say, hey, you know what? I mean, you see them fires every day. I mean, you see them yourself. And like I said, I went to South Dakota. I never lost sight of them. Smoke for two hundred miles. I mean, it's.
I would have probably seen, you know, I have too. I've seen fires every day all over the county.
All over.
No matter which way you go.
No, no matter which way you go.
People use common sense. You know, they maybe wait till three, four, five o'clock to light it, wind dying down. Now it'll work. I mean, you're a high category. I think you probably started out in severe or whatever.
I think your category's fine. It just needs to be. Put in place a little better. I'd like to see something more up to Chris, updated twice a day this time of year in the fall or something.
Good point. Good point.
I guess, I, I'd hate to put more on your shoulders, Chris, but.
Well, the, the burn ban is issued once a day. Part of the, the index, excuse me, is issued once a day. It's on Facebook.
Right.
And it's up to the responsibility of if you're gonna burn, that's your responsibility to make sure you have made all your. Isers dotted, Ts are crossed. Hey, I went to the website. I figured the information. I am safe to burn.
I understand that. But like, like Ed just said. Conditions change throughout the day, you know? You get to four, five o'clock, the wind goes down, humidity comes up, the temperatures go down. Your fire index has completely now changed.
Common sense. It's, you know, they all have common sense.
But because this map came out at six AM.
Right.
Yes, this, this map came out at six AM. Now, from six PM to ten PM, I've got an opportunity to run around and get some work done, get some of these sleuths burnt, get some flax straws burnt. But because the map was put out at six AM, now that option has been completely taken away from me. If somehow we had an option where it was up. A local where it was updated twice a day or something.
Oh, that is a, a match and then run. You know, that's.
Yeah, if we had six and.
Well, that's what we.
But, but, but that wasn't what we were intending to do the other.
That was the problem.
Yeah.
Why, we need to do something different as a county.
Well, I agree.
To have a different map. Let's have our own map.
Yeah, I, I'd even have your own map.
That's fine, but then what parameters do we use to, and, and this is not, I understand that you guys are saying. County Commission figure it out. I'm bringing this up to my colleagues and just saying it to the room all, in general. What parameters do we use? One of the fears that I have, and I think that, that, you know, Chris does his best to, to treat everyone the same. But I could foresee a situation then where Cole calls and says, I really need to get into the field and burn today. So how about we update today? And then Farmer John calls the next day and it's very similar conditions and maybe Chris doesn't like him as much. No, we're not gonna change it. I, I don't want that kind of, of arbitrary capacity.
Well, I think you can, you can talk.
Go one out of six and go one out of noon.
I think you can talk to your, your fire, you know, all fire chiefs and you can come up. I mean, if. If your humidity's getting below forty percent and that's what you decide is one of the parameters, if your wind is above. Twenty miles an hour, you can set that as part of your parameters. I mean. Well, as the commission and the fire chiefs, I mean, have the conversation. I, I, I don't pretend to know all the answers. But I think it's worth having a conversation over.
I, I think by, by changing things periodically throughout the day becomes inconsistent. And, and then deputies don't know which to enforce and what not to enforce, when to enforce it.
Well, the deputies have to look at the same map we do. We got, we got guys saying that.
So can I ask a different question, just as, as a, as a natural logical outcome of this, changing it twice a day? So let's say that we start in a high category at the start of the day and you go light a match. And at twelve oh one PM, the winds picked up, that fire is still raging. And now the deputy shows up. You think people won't be angry about getting a, a B misdemeanor because their fire was burning at eleven AM and it's still burning and now it's high?
Common sense. Let's hear some common sense.
Still legitimate question, Lucas, but. I mean, it's, I think we've all, in the conversations I've had with all of you, the conversations I've had with you this morning, Steve. I, I don't think we're ever gonna come up with a, a perfect system.
No, we won't.
I mean, I think everybody's in agreement though, Matt.
We, we know that.
Yeah.
You sit there, Terry, logging up, you know that.
That's right. Go ahead. I think you need to back up here a little bit. And look at the whole, I see what you're saying, Bo. Flax straw and stuff. But you're talking about a twenty-four hour period. It ain't the end of the world.
No.
Everything. I mean, if you, they do have forecasts on that website. Along with the map that says two, three days out, what they're projecting. If you go start doing twelve hours at a time. Somebody's gonna want six hours at a time. And then you got a total fucking mess. If you can't back up. And look at that forecast. In a twenty-four hour period, and then the three day forecast that says they're projecting this three day term out. And, and. And, and do your burning on that day. It may screw your schedule up, but we're talking about twenty-four hours. Well, when, seriously, I mean. I understand where you're coming from. I did farm. You know, what I'm saying, you're, you know, I'm farming down here and I'm gonna be going, I've got flax up north to burn. And when I get there, I need that around ready, because I got plenty to sell to me. I understand that.
So there's gotta be.
Is that all the land you're dealing with?
Yes.
And I've got some in Benson County and I've got some in Dollar County. Okay, well, my family's in County, all my flax is up there. And I'm down here, getting done here. When I get up there, I wanna be able to keep moving. I understand that. And, but what I'm saying is, you want your cake and eat it too, and that's not. No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that you, you can't just spend two days in the vats. That, oh, I'm gonna, I'll burn today, because I won't, I'm down here. I need it ready when I get there. I understand that. Because I got a plan to do, that I might be putting corn in, which is a twenty-five. I might not have that twenty-four hours of it. I would be.
Yeah.
Well, but, but I'm saying, if you, if you're gonna start this twelve hour stuff. It's gonna be impossible. Then you might as well just shut it all down.
Yeah.
Okay, because we're not, I understand the work part of it and the agricultural part of it. But I'm not always gonna shut my short door and lock it. Because you need to burn. And I will do that.
And I will do that.
No, I, I know that.
Part of the part, part. I do because I sign them.
Yeah, but I mean, you don't wanna have, I don't want you to have to either.
But, you know, the other part of this is, cutting down the fire department's exposure to hazards. You know, put trucks on the road. Okay, tough. Last week when the weather service. Called the fire in because it was red flag, I think.
It was just a street red flag there.
It went up, it burnt fifteen minutes, ten minutes. It was before we got there, it burnt off, okay? No hard, no foul. I don't know. We had three, we had two trucks on the road. Three trucks on the road. We got shut down. I was going back to the hall. That was over there. Lit one up. A quarter mile from the fire truck and the deputy sitting on the road. And he had the same thing you do. He's gotta get it done. Okay? So when I got back to the hall, I put a brush truck on the road. And I got three, I invented two trucks within fifteen minutes of each other and they both been on the road. In a response, more. Maybe some dipshit pulls up in front of me and we have people on. Now I got a hundred and twenty thousand dollar fire truck that's in the deal because somebody had to burn. I'm not trying to be an ass. But what I'm saying is, I think. There's enough people that. Do need to plan a couple of days ahead of time. And this weather, you know, and I under, if it rains this weekend, this will all be in the wind. I mean, it's, it's an extreme situation we're dealing with and I.
I, I, it's, it's snow and rain two days before that Saturday and.
I, I think there's, I think there's two things we're talking about here. One. As we've said before, if we would have set it at high immediately. None of us would be sitting here having this discussion.
You're right.
And we, and we recognize that. We made the adjustment. We admitted that we should have made the change and we made it wrong. We made the change.
And I, I think that's the only change.
And, and the flexibility is there now. I, I bet you what, I, I haven't kept track, but seventy-five percent plus of the days where we have the ability to burn.
Ten days out of the last fifteen.
Yeah, ten days, so we have the sixty, two thirds.
Fifty-six.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty good ratio.
The high change every day.
Yes, and, and we, we admitted that. We made the change because we, we, we didn't do it right the first time. The second thing is the twelve versus twenty-four hours. I, I struggle with it simply because. We already have a hard enough time getting people to look up the website once a day to make sure they make their decision properly. Let alone if we start to put in twice a day, three times a day, whatever, you know? We can't, like you said, we can't make a perfect system.
It's, it's, it doesn't happen often, but I've seen it, uh. Maybe twice since this burn ban started in Randy County where that map actually switched. Throughout the day, for the, for the, you know, that was back when we were only in moderate and low. And it went from moderate to high like midday. And then one time it came from high and went down to moderate one night.
That map does change during the day.
It will change. If the conditions change drastically enough for them to warn.
Change. That, and there are occurrences where they will stick a red flag on in the middle of the day. That's not a six AM, when all of a sudden the winds pick up and then they say, we got a red flag.
Flag got put on your.
Yeah, they'll stick.
I understood when it was set at six AM. That's the way it went all day.
That, that, that will change. It says that on the website.
I learned something there too.
I understood it the same way you did until watching it. I've been watching it daily.
My flip phone, I'll get that.
I I'm gonna, did it go up here?
I was gonna say.
So then it probably is taking care of itself that you're changing.
Well, okay, I didn't know that was the case at all. Chris, you knew that?
I I actually did not completely know that without a drastic change. If it was a drastic change, then whether I knew that they were updated, if it was a drastic change.
Like from low to extreme or what?
Um, so like a cold front or something would come through and bring in a bunch of moisture that they would have updated. I knew that. But we haven't really had any of those days that I could that I can recall.
Well, it ain't the one day, the the one day that I can remember that it did change was um, all of a sudden the humidity shot up to. You know.
The hell was a twelve hour idea then?
For.
They're they're changing it. We don't need it.
It it does change if the conditions weren't to change.
It was a big help when they started talking both of them, you know, you know, when they were talking. Um, you know, it was extreme, you know, and they were hitting that, maybe not every hour, but. You know, that's what I really noticed the change about, you know, you can look out and see less smoke, if you will. That really helps when they're, you know, Kurt Kurt McKay will say, you know, that six fifteen or even beyond it.
Maybe maybe one of the things we can ask radio works to include within their weather. What that they do every half hour on other stations would be include what that fire index is for the day. Um, and they do have four stations, whether you're listening to one or or the other. The the one problem I can see with that and probably one that happened very often during the day is sometimes they do um. Voice track their their segments and they're not actual live. But what they do following that is generally somebody reading the current conditions, you know. You know, so that one individual is over all four stations. Um, so that would be something we could certainly ask them to do and include it within their.
That would be a big help.
Weather.
It would be a big help.
I heard.
Jeff, can I make a recommendation too on that?
Absolutely.
What about reverse nine one one? Have people sign up for it?
Um.
That's a good question.
Can it be?
How do we even do that?
That isolated to include whatever individuals?
Or you can do the whole county?
Well, that's just it.
Well, you could have farmers sign up. I mean, it it.
It could be. So that could be a pretty big problem. That can't put up to huge room.
Yeah, I mean, you got one farmer.
There's a, there's mainly a hundred farmers.
Why why? Why can't we just set up an automated line that people can call or talk entities? I mean, that doesn't seem very hard.
Could it be something is, and granted, this is for. Broad range discussion, but something as simple as. And I don't, you know, we got guys with flip phones, but most people can get text messages. You know, you can put together a text message list and and Chris could push it out in the morning.
That that would reverse nine one one.
I know, but I'm saying that way we don't have to burden the law enforcement center with it because there's a whole bunch of stuff the law enforcement center has to take care of already that we don't want to throw on top of them if we don't have to. We'll throw it on Chris instead. I'm just saying this is, these are good discussions to have, not necessarily for today, but long term so we can fix it so it's better in the future for everybody.
There is our, there is other fire departments in the state. That have set up different hotlines like you were just talking about. Um. You know, you call into that, you report that you're having control of burn. I haven't. I've been trying to make contact with this guy to figure out how they're doing that. Because somehow it's getting relayed down, which right now the L E C is doing all of ours. You know, you call it A on burn this, this, this. You know, whatever they call us and they tell us, okay? They have a hotline setup that tells them what the conditions are. And then you can leave a message saying, hey, I'm burning this. Right here. How that is getting back to the fire department itself, I'm not sure of yet. But that's not a.
Something to work on.
You all, I said, you know, I maybe that's rather than. You know, that's an avenue that a guy can look at, you know, where you can call this number, whatever that phone number is, today the conditions are.
Yeah.
This, no burning advised. Hey, today the conditions are this.
Please, please tell us where your burning section, whatever.
I mean, that's that's no more.
Right, yeah.
That's no more complicated than an answering machine, right? Instead of saying, this is Lucas Wakefield, you just say, the conditions today are this. If you do it in the mess and you record it, however many times a day, maybe five times a day, you re-record it and it changed.
Right.
Right? I mean, that takes all of two minutes on our end. And you push that number out to all the farmers and say, everybody, even the flip phone guys can make a phone call. Well, that'd be one number. You can't put out two in the public. Maybe four.
You can have a couple of different packs and stuff.
Yeah, I like the radio. I I've heard red flag several times.
Your radio's good.
Yeah, the radio's.
You have a couple of different options you can walk it out at the same time.
Oh, totally.
And I say, hey, guys, there's three, four things here. You can figure out what you need to do with.
Yeah, whatever works best.
Whatever works best.
Right, you try to get as many options out there.
Right now, people are using, oh, I see smoke over there, smoke over there. Must be your damn person.
Well, and that's exactly what's happening and then the deputies are out and they're required to follow their job duties. And they're seeing smoke and they're responding to that smoke. And and so it just becomes a a real cluster at the end of the day.
It just got out of hand.
It it's really dead. And I I appreciate the discussion that we're having um, today. Um, a lot more productive um, than streaming out one another. Um, that becomes nonproductive.
And it needs to happen. I know it was drier this spring, but I mean, there's times when it's been a wet spring and guys are burning.
Yeah.
It happens every year and and it needs to be done every year.
I'm kind of, I I'm just kind of surprised in all honesty because I was thinking about it since I've been on the commission six and a half years. We put on a burn ban, what? Three, four times probably yet?
Not very often and it's usually later.
It's usually later in the season and I think that's the big difference is it's usually in the fall is when we've had to put it on and we haven't had to deal with. The fact that it's been as dry as long as it has been and the fact we've been able to replay, replay crop, crop land.
Well, and and a burn ban isn't just about the farmers, right? It's about somebody not lighting a huge bonfire half a mile out of Beverly's.
To be honest with you, the burn bans on before and we kind of just did our thing and nobody really ever bothered us about it.
You know, I mean, it's. Just the way it was, you know, so you you don't think of it, you know, it's like, oh, I guess it's a burn ban. Uh-uh. That must be the Lakewood people. We're buying.
There is a bit of a difference though between a cattail slough and a plowed section. And a bunch of campers all within fifteen feet of each other that have bomb sheds. Four wheelers, golf carts, you know, whatever. There there is a different fire load there. There's a different aspect to that. So, yeah, you're you're right. It doesn't just apply, it doesn't just apply to farmers. But there is a difference.
I totally agree there's a difference, but the county doesn't have the ability to say, don't go light a bonfire next to town, but the farmers do. We don't have that.
No, no.
I don't know. We could have plenty of bonfires.
Do we want to make any changes? Um, any recommendations from law enforcement, fire departments?
I guess I give two cents there. Um, I think what you guys have done has been very good because when this whole, before this thing was implemented. Um, the deputy chief under Sean and we were running our butts off. I mean, it was, it was ridiculous. And since this has happened and everything is staying down. And uh, I'm sure you guys are all familiar, but every one of us has another job. We don't sit there and wait for calls. You're taking people out of, what do you? You know what you call a telephone company and we've got guys everywhere. We are, we are, and there is a lot of guys that are also farmers too. So, I mean, I I'd like to thank you guys for what you've done. Unfortunately, there has been some individuals that have gotten in trouble. And I agree with them. The misdemeanor is probably a little harsh, but I mean, you know. You guys have done, I think you guys have done a good job. And it's helped us a lot too.
I agree with my deputy chief on that. I mean, thank you guys for your service.
Yeah, but.
I can't thank you enough. The the high. I mean, I I can sit here and go through my phone. Sean definitely can go through the the book we have with the fire hall, but I mean, just going through the text messages that we get to go up and respond. It's not been nearly as bad since it went to high as it was at Mar. I I just can't tell you that.
It sounds, it sounds to me like we've got a couple of things we've got to deal with then. The high is working well.
Yes.
We need to work with the legislators to maybe talk about the fact that the B misdemeanor is a little bit harsh and maybe it should be a second offense type of thing. And maybe, maybe it should be an infraction or a citation or fine for the first one and then you learn your lesson and then. The second one rises to a misdemeanor or something. You know, we could work on something like that.
So we don't have to come back to it.
Yes, to maybe try to fix this a little so you you don't, we're not turning guys for making a mistake into a criminal. Because if, so we we could work on something like that long term over two years because legislature's not back in for a couple of years now. And on top of it then, you know, Dave's particular situation, maybe he could visit with the state's attorney and try to get something hammered out.
Yeah, and and thing here, you know, go back to me, I I his point on planning. But my point is I don't send my hired man out to do the burn. I do it myself. And I I it's hard to leave my other guys to go do that.
You don't understand.
You know, and I don't want to just send. A fifteen year old kid up there.
No.
Head going down here. So that's what I need is I gotta have it ready when I get there and I gotta be the one to go do it. And like today, for instance, I got one hired man who's down in the fire hall. There's serious issues again. And the other hired man is out working by himself and we're trying to, we're shorthanded. And you can't get any way out because they're all in jail. On the court. But I mean, honestly.
No, and I understand where it comes from, Dave. The the point I I get, I I guess I want to make is. Two thirds of the days or more now, you have the ability to.
Yeah, it's it's gonna be better.
So so work, work with the state's attorney and maybe you guys can get together because now you won't have to worry about the ninety days deferred imposition, all that. Hopefully you'll be able to have time to get the burning that you need to get done without the problem. Work with him. I'm sure they'll be, you know.
I'm happy to talk.
He's happy to talk and he can try to get it structured so we don't cause a problem for you.
Yeah, you guys really grew that thing with technology here.
Well, and that's, that's on us. I mean, that's, we need to do a better job.
We have to do a better job getting the information out so you get to.
Um, trying to talk to the the legislature. I mean, to me, that sounds like the two things that need to be done. We need to make sure that it is that easy to get the information on on what you can and can't do that day. And probably need to change.
Let's be honest, let's just, let's hope it's never this dry again at this time of the year. This is the driest it's ever, the least, the least amount of precipitation.
Actually, that's goddamn the way we're at.
I I realize that.
Twenty eight years of cattail love that we're getting.
I I don't.
Twenty eight years.
I don't disagree with you.
I was happy about it.
I remember birds in the spring.
And 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 all the plant has been fantastic. All all birds are good then.
Before I come to town, John asked me, how long since you've seen it through the sewer? Twenty eight years.
Yes, I know.
I told him I seen a road out. Don't you? It's been, I told him the other day, I said, I haven't seen that road for twenty years.
Twenty eight.
No, I don't disagree with you. All I'm saying is January to April of this year is the least amount of precipitation you've ever gotten in a hundred and twenty five years of record keeping. So we could have taken a half inch, inch of rain at some point in time and it would have relieved all of this garbage.
We're probably getting into a dry cycle and then this is going to continue and and we need to fix it.
It's it's all the, all the better why we need to hammer this out now to get it right.
Probably wasn't the eighties.
Pretty much. The last major drought was eighty eight and eighty nine followed. It was another super drought. So I mean, if if the cycle follows, we could easily have this problem again next spring, you know.
Well, very easily, even if, even if we get some rain the next few days, it's not.
Somebody's ever seen as many fires lately. Well, they're all burnt. Everybody's got them all done. Basically, it's gonna come down to communication.
Yes.
With everybody. I mean, and I'm I have as much a fault of communicating as anybody. I mean, just saying.
Yeah, I I am too.
Guys, you just, you don't think of it, you know, it's just something we've always did and you go out and do it and.
I think we finally found the right traffic to be in high.
Yeah, yeah, I think you just need to be in high and and let the chips fall where they may and and. Some guys are gonna be out there, be reckless and not many. I don't think they're.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think you're, you're there now.
I think you're there. Just a little more information and. Get more sites to help guys with and we'll be fine. I mean.
Yeah, well.
So like you said, for me, it's.
It hasn't been, you know, it certainly wasn't an easy thing to do because we know how important that that is to production and to culture. Um, getting ready to upgrade your fields and that's the easiest way to do it.
It's the only way you can do it. There's something you can do at that tail of the burn.
And and we want to certainly appreciate our fire department and the volunteers. We understand and know that you guys have other jobs that you're out there doing. And the last thing that we want to do is send you on on a bunch of calls. And that you're not needed and risk life, women, property and responding to that incident. So want to thank everybody. I don't know if we're gonna be doing any.
You don't have to.
You you don't.
You know, you know, I have to be done. Thanks, guys.
Again, thank you.
Thanks for your chat.
That was a really good discussion.
Really, really good discussion. Thank you.
Well, look, I'm just looking to work, guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
I thank you all for uh, sitting through the agenda that we're in about that discussion, but uh. Appreciate.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. So Roger will uh, hammer you all real quick if you have. If you have anything else. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. Unless you have anything you want to.
I just, I just want the commission to know that. You're gonna do what you guys think.
Yeah.
And and I think in the long run, what we did went a long ways to really be reliable. About the burning issue, right? But you know what? I think it's some home, hey, wait a minute, I can't do this. Without some repercussion and yes, you got thrown under the bus. But that's the way the system worked. It wasn't nothing to do with, nobody did anything wrong. Just the way the system worked, you know, you guys can't put out an issue without being enforced in my opinion. Otherwise, it's no better even issuing. And we don't follow through with what you guys, our wishes are and your orders are.
And we appreciate your orders.
Systems and yet.
We we appreciate your, you and your deputies' consistency.
Well, that was our goal, was to be consistent and be fair. And uh, I just want you guys to know my side of how I took this was, you know, we need to do what you guys are directing us to here.
Yeah, and and I I'm not trying to, I I don't think anybody's trying to blame you for doing, you have to enforce because that's, but the the thing that I struggled with was. The inflexibility, but the inflexibility was there because of the fact that we should have set it at high right away. And we we put you guys in a bad situation, having to go out and enforce something when it just wasn't what was right. Because we we were learning and we knew there was gonna be some hiccups in this and it sounds like we've gotten to a point where we're at least.
There. But even if you would have looked at it very high, I think you would have burned.
We still would have some. I don't, I don't deny that.
I still think that lesson needs to be said, that lesson needs to be said. We need business and we're gonna do it and uh, you know. And I think that it, you know, this year, next year, it's gonna help because a lot more people that are thinking maybe look ahead and say, wait a minute. It's how people get educated. It's no different than what we have to. But this was part of that education also was what happened this spring. Was that, okay, well, they're gonna come over here and I'm gonna get a letter of the mail. And so maybe I should think, well, that's all it takes, ten times. You know, some have common sense, a lot, most ninety now, but there's the ones that don't. And there's always gonna be change. And they're always gonna be there.
In all honesty, I think that's what we're seeing more than anything is the fact that we're changing.
It's based on us that, you know, we're supporting your decisions. Hundred fifty percent, you know, and that's, that's my job.
Right, and that, that's the other aspect of it is that it's our decision. The the five of us, not any individual can make that, then none of us did. And and so that's why I put this on the agenda for tonight for discussion. Because I know individually we were getting hit and uh, that needed to be brought to all of us.
The only point, the only point I want to make is Steve's not supposed to enforce our decisions when it's a bad decision.
Oh.
You're supposed to cover us here, man. Come on.
We'd really like to, to thank that for.
Come on, man, help us. No, I mean, I I I'll 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 take the blame as much as any, we just, we were, we were learning as we went. We knew there was gonna be pain and. This is what we were saw here tonight and now hopefully we can get it out.
We're all, we're not. We were responding to fires that we got called on, we were responding to fire, that people called in. There was a few that we, that were so huge that we saw that, we went to. But, you know, the ones you had to go to. I mean, I can see the smoke from fifteen miles away. That's not a little half acre sleet burn in the middle of the field.
Twenty-eight years in a cattail. Bottom line.
Bottom line of the.
Anyway, I just want the guys to know my side, you know.
So understand.
I'm here to support you guys and do.
But you're, but you're doing your job.
The directive was what the directive was.
And that's what we did, we gave what we're supposed to do.
Well, we appreciate that.
I mean.
Even if we had to change it.
Yeah, and then once you change it, we're fine with that, I don't care what you put, we'll, we'll do whatever. Once you changed it, we adjusted, I told the guy, now we're done. Until, you know, until we get to this level. And, uh, you know, that's where we, we're just gonna follow through with whatever your mandates or, uh, uh, what's it called?
Decisions.
I'm getting a way to add to the comments. Um, this president's definitely calling for advice, but I mean, I tell my guys the same thing.
You're not sure the decision, call me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's reasonable, you're the department head.
The reason, call me. Because he was told that the fire department was standing by waiting for him to call them off. Which was not true, but that's what he thought. It had nothing to do with whether he was gonna do it, but anyway, that's not here.
Uh, things get lost in communication.
And I, I, there was no sense, I just looked, you know. But that, that is there, especially I have young veterans. My message to them is if you don't know, call me.
Yeah.
I don't care what time of day or night, call me and I'll ask the board and we'll talk you through it.
You provide leaders. And I'm sure.
Well, let's, let's move on when we say.
You're not, you're not bringing us something to debate for an hour, sorry.
Looks like you just want to spend some money.
So Roger has, uh, we have a bid to discuss on, uh, the asbestos, asbestos um, removal of the doorway down the, by the historical room. We're gonna create a new entrance for that meeting room for social service visitations. And, uh, we need to go ahead and improve that. Um, forty-nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Roger, if you have anything you'd like to add, otherwise we will.
Yeah, I just, I guess the other two, um, uh, companies that has done work for it before, they're both basically cutting down. So I find they did find the, helping out of maybe all that, uh. So.
So the forty-nine fourteen is just for asbestos removal then?
Well, they'll cut the doorway, they'll cut the doorway from where, yeah.
What, what, what are these then?
Okay, that's, that's the rest of the wall, I put a new door in.
So we're gonna approve each of those separately, I assume.
Do you need all three contractors?
Well, no, just the, just one.
Just, just this one first, this one.
That's what you want?
Are you comfortable with that, Roger?
I can get.
Motion to approve.
Action in a second to approve the, uh, bid for the Sletton builders for removal of the asbestos on the uh, asbestos or the historical one. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, so you can probably say no.
Aye.
Approve at the same time. That bid is approved.
Okay, um, now we got two estimates for building of the wall and then putting in the drawer. That's the, the doorway has been touched. Um, build-in construction for, uh, seventy-one sixty-one and attachment builders for sixty-four hundred.
See any reason not to accept a little bit?
I see no reason not to accept a little bit. I've never worked with him, but I know he's been around for a long time. So.
We have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
And we have a second to approve the low bid, uh, for attachment builders. Sixty-four hundred dollars, any further discussion?
The only question I would have is how, how quickly are we getting this done?
Well, the, um, asbestos could potentially be done next Friday, Saturday, uh, the twenty-ninth thirtieth.
Yeah.
They were waiting to hear about what happens tonight, if it's approved or not. And he said that he would pretty sure get up, get that done tomorrow that we have.
Yeah.
Now the carpenter, I really do not know. But hopefully that could be done in a matter of.
Okay, I, I was just asking the question because, you know, on the one bid he does have that, you know, they might have to move the bid price up materials, but if we give him a go-ahead now, I would assume that the, the price is gonna stay very similar, so. Just so, just so it doesn't all of a sudden go up seven hundred bucks or whatever, all of a sudden we're not technically accepting a little bit.
And, you know, realistically, all their work with the sheetrock and, and steel stripes, so I, you know, it's not like it's lumber which can skyrocket.
Okay, okay. Just to answer the question.
Yeah. Any further discussion? We have a motion, uh, second, uh, approve the low bid for attachment builders, uh. All those in favor signify the same time.
Aye.
Approve at the same time. Motion carries. Uh, anything else, Roger?
No.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Johnson. How are you doing? Thank you for sitting through. Appreciate you being here. Um, I asked you to come in, uh, joint powers agreement. Law enforcement center. Um, is updating their joint powers agreement with their entities. Uh, was the five political subdivisions of Ramsey, Nelson, Benson, Eddie Counties and the city of Devil's Lake. And, uh, do we have any questions regarding that?
Well, then real quick, I'll just kind of update, where we're at on this is we want to get it out so now that we can get input and feedback from different entities. As far as what they like in it, what they don't like, recommendations on changes, uh, questions that they might have. Uh, I've already actually given out my, that county actually thought that they were approved in it, so they approved. Uh, agreeing to this. Um, so, uh, the, the, I, I, I happen to know that the city of Devil's Lake hasn't even discussed it in their meeting yet. So when we have our meetings, we're all wanting to go over this, I don't know. So if right now we're just gonna get input and feedback, we've spent a good amount of time over the last year really trying to get this into a place where we are comfortable with it. Working with the board, uh, uh, my fingerprints are really all over this thing, so I, I tried to stay as objective as I could in giving some guidance to our attorney in, in developing it. Um, but I think, you know, it's open for discussion, is this the way that it's gonna be when we find it signed? I absolutely believe there's no way. I think there's, there could be a lot of things that are gonna come up from some entities that are gonna ask for some changes in some areas. So, really.
So, I, I advise the commissioner, I read through it, I thought it was a pretty county-friendly agreement. Our, we're concerned, I can't speak for them as far as what they're gonna do. There was a question about if you were to take the building and turn it upside down and shake it out. Who owns what when it falls out? Is that defined in here, is that something we can consider?
So, uh, there, that's where I think a lot of the discussion is really gonna go yet. There, we need to establish an agreement between Ramsey County, the city of Devil's Lake, and the LEC, all of those three. Specifically the physical plant. There's also gonna be an argument of who owns what at this point. Cause the original agreement is gonna be that the city and the county owns the main building and the property is on. But what about the additional assets that have been collected by the LEC over the years since then? I think there's gonna be argument and discussion over who owns what there, cause it's not clearly defined.
So yet to be determined is what we're saying.
Right, and as far as that, that agreement, it's something that, you know, hasn't really been initiated with some, and I don't know what the process needs to be for that to get the city and the county together, work with us and, and the LEC as far as the lease agreement. Identify who owns what, who owns what, uh, who's gonna be responsible for what, how are those things gonna be approved? Uh, cause the, the original agreements, the current ones that we're acting on there refer back to the nineteen seventy-three original agreement where the city and the county have to approve any capital expenditures before the board can actually consider. So it's, it's kind of in my interpretation of that, that we have a commission that's made up of commissioners from the boards and by them approving it, we're kind of in a facto.
The county is signing off because.
Right, because we're representing.
Yeah, because we represent, we, we sent those commissioners as representatives of the body as a whole.
Right. So I, I think, I think you can argue, argue both ways on that.
Yeah, and I think that's, that was my main question last time, we'll represent it very well, was just the question of in the past, we've had kind of an amorphous agreement in terms of, okay, when we needed to do something like put the camera system in. Who was gonna be in charge of paying for it, we just kind of hammered it out. Now, if we stipulate specifically in an agreement going forward that the city and the county own the physical plant, is that gonna preclude the other entities from also helping out on certain things again? Physical plant versus, you know, flip the building upside down, shake it out, what counts as a fixed asset versus a, you know, to the building versus a non-fixed asset? You know, cause if it could be stripped from the building, it can be sold. So then who's gonna be in charge of paying for those things?
Right.
Long-term, I mean, stuff like the parking lot or something? If that's gonna be a physical asset to the building and attributable to it, but something like the boiler or something, you know, there's gotta be, and, and I know those are defined under auditing guidelines and things like that, but I just, I think their agreement as a whole is really good. It's just gonna be a matter of hammering out those things on how are, I mean, and we need flexibility too, just because the board can make determinations at the time when it's occurring. But we just have to have some guidance long-term so we know kind of what we're getting into.
And, and that might have to be a separate agreement. The county and the city of our, here's how we handle this. You know.
I would agree with you there.
I take the first six, you take the other half of the dozen kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if that needs to go into.
Well, the, the only time that would ever be relevant is in case of dissolution of the law enforcement center, right?
Well, who owns the physical assets that are at the building?
Right, but, but that's, that's the only time it would ever be relevant, right? So then could you make the argument that all the phys, like all of the pick-upable assets, the pens and everything, right, are owned by the law enforcement center? And all you would ever actually need to do is define sort of the buy-in share that each entity has. And then the proceeds, in the case of the dissolution of the LEC, of all the sale of those assets would be divided up.
Which would be, you know.
Right, amongst whatever share portion they have. That's the way it would work if it were a, an LLC or something.
Yes, I, I agree with where you're coming from, but my point is that something like the camera project. If we're saying that that's a physical asset that's attached to the building, then at that point, the agreement and structure in front of us is essentially saying that Ramsey County and the city of Devil's Lake are responsible for all of that. And not the other entities. Where in the past, the other entities have agreed to help pay for those things. So long-term, we need to know, at least within a reasonable concept, what is going to be our long-term liability in terms of improvements on the building versus, you know, stuff like pens, stuff like, things like that, I mean, that's, that's obviously reasonable that it's gonna be owned as, as the LEC as a whole, but I, I just wanna know exactly what we would be on the hook for in the future. You know, cause in the past, if we wanted to repair the parking lot, everybody would have chipped in it. Well, if it's gonna be just the city of Devil's Lake and Ramsey County, we need to know that. Because it's gonna, it's gonna in, de-increase our exposure in terms of cost. Long-term, I mean, cause this, this, this is gonna go for perpetuity until we make a change, so.
How do I do it?
Yeah, so we haven't agreed, we haven't switched anything since seventy-three, that's ten years before I was born.
We've been different. We've done things different.
Yes, we have.
Since then.
And we have.
The camera and the intercom system was different.
Yeah, a, a, and that's what I'm saying, we just have to have some type of a, it, it, it doesn't have to be this, 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 but there has to at least be some type of parameters on who's gonna pay for what reasonably, or at least the saying that the board has the capability to ask for that chip essentially.
Keyword.
Yes.
The board.
Yeah.
That's where the people are coming together, they're running the law enforcement center and making agreements. And the camera and the intercom system, everybody understood what we were getting into.
And their necessary requirements to provide the operation.
We weren't gonna say it out of pedal pressure until we seen that.
No, but I agree completely, I've been on board with every improvement we've ever made. My question is, is what happens if we get to a point where this agreement's in place and essentially says Ramsey County and the city of Devil's Lake are in cha, in charge of those things and paying for those things? And we have other outside entities that decide that we're not on the hook for it, we don't have to pay for it.
You don't have to do that.
Well, and that's, exactly, and that's, that's the point I'm roundabout getting to is that at that point, then does the board have the discretion to say, you guys are paying seventy-five dollars a day, but since you're not paying for any physical plant improvements, we're gonna charge you one oh five a day or whatever.
Okay.
That, all I'm saying is I want the flexibility in the agreement to be able to function long-term.
You want something like that in there?
Not necessarily, but I, I just think it's something that needs to be discussed at the, the LEC board meeting, I'm sure it's going to be. Cause everybody's got these thoughts in their head, I'm sure. It's not just be looking at.
What was the camera system, a little eight hundred thousand?
Yes.
We thought it was gonna be about five, six, I'm sorry, yeah, take one hundred. It was a couple hundred over. And the other entities didn't hesitate at all.
Oh, and they didn't, they were really good about it. And, and we've had a really good working relationship overall for the last little bit, now that we've got the things getting on the right track, but.
I really don't think we're gonna make a lot of changes in this agreement.
I don't.
From seventy-three, but it's what, they're already decent.
Overall, for, you know, fifty years almost.
Well, and, and you have to.
No.
You're really good point, uh, too, because, I mean, I'm gonna be pushing a hearing coming up very soon for and we're gonna start getting numbers as far as doing expansion, physical plant expansion. Our food service costs have gone up over fifty-one percent just in the last year. Uh, based off of what we have, we have a low bid for our food contractor and, and the fact that we have it coming, you know, that is basically catered into us. Uh, I, I was talking to one of our correctional administrators association meeting and uh, Andy Frobe, who's the administrator for Cass County, and I was talking to him about how much our food service costs are per year now. His average daily population is two hundred and eighty, and he'll pay more than a hundred thousand dollars less per year in food service costs. So, and, and that means we need to get a kitchen. Cause we have to reduce our food service costs, we're paying way too, we're paying just as much in food service costs as we are for healthcare, that's just our point.
Interesting.
So there's, there's physical plant needs in that aspect to try and help us save some money and be more efficient. And then there's also the fact that we're, we're out of space, PD needs more space, sheriff's office needs more space. But there, there's something that we're gonna be, having someone come in, take a look, give us an idea and then we can come back and work some numbers, so.
Yeah.
But then now who's gonna be on the hook for it, or what is the process gonna be for getting approved for that? So then who's gonna own, you know, there's, like, all that stuff, that's gonna be a part of that.
Well, I think the LEC has operated very well under that existing LEC board. And, and I think, you know, as representatives on there, we have, we're given that authority to act on behalf of the, the commission on that.
No, and I, I agree with you completely, I'm, I'm just looking, I'm just thinking long-term, if, you know, this agreement's gonna be out there in perpetuity, so just to make sure that we don't give ourselves any tripwires we could fall over in ten or fifteen years or something like that. I, like I said, I think the agreement as a whole, in terms of all of the delineations and stuff, I think it's really, really good. I think it's much, it's, it's very, very, uh, comprehensive, it has all the information we need. I just wanna make sure that we cover our bases basically and, and give the board the ability to function and make those decisions and, and we can, on top of the fact that, you know, we might have other entities at some point in time that might come to us and, and look for you know, additional services or whatever, and then have them also, uh, share in the, in the cost of making sure that the facility runs well.
Is there changes that you'd like to see made to this existing or this draft document? Before we.
No, not specifically this, I just think it's, I think it's gonna, I think in all honesty, it's gonna come more down to the side agreement between us and the city of Devil's Lake. And, and I think that's where I think we're gonna have to hammer out those details, because this basically states that the board will have the discretion to, to capital improvements, things like that. I think that's all we need in there on this, but I think that's where the, we're really gonna get down to the nuts and bolts of it is us, between us and the city and how we're gonna handle those things going forward.
We should start that process.
Yes, I think we should, and I understand that we've been working on this, one thing at a time basically, but I think that's something we're gonna, that's where we're gonna have to hammer it out.
You're on the right page, just wanna know about that.
Other than that, are we looking for, uh, an initial recommend, or an initial, uh, motion to accept this right now?
No, I, I think right now, let's just give them a guidepost here, representative to come out and commission more of this. No, I, I think right now, let's just give them a guidepost here, representative to come back with a mission tomorrow, to say, you know, here are the things that we wanna discuss, or, or look at, or change. I think we'll talk pretty extensively about the, the need for that side agreement, all that with the practice. Um, so, again, I don't know that there's any action required, we just wanna give opportunity for everyone to review it, come back with some feedback and input, so we know if we need to be looking at changes or all of the, the plans, so.
Can I, can I ask you two questions? What is the average jail population on a given day of about a hundred, right?
No, uh, we've been, so through the first quarter or first third of this year, it was around eighty-six, eighty-seven.
And, and how till those eighty-seven individuals, average, how many are Ramsey County's financials?
So, it was for the same timeframe, uh, this year's been forty-seven, but, well, so, give me a second, I have to clarify. It's been forty-seven, but seven of those on the average population side have been people that have been billed full to the state, way into a pen. So your actual number's probably closer to forty, uh, and I believe for this year, we budgeted, uh, average yearly population around the county at, I don't know, thirty-eight. I've actually got the numbers ready for a commission tomorrow.
You, you have a very good breakdown in the heat for tomorrow.
We usually end up being, what, around forty percent, forty to forty-five, depends on the year, something like that.
But, but Marshall's a pretty helpful offset that.
Yeah, give or take, long term, though, we're always in that forty to fifty range of the, of the cost. And then, Devils Lake and, or the Benson County's usually second, and then Devils Lake's third.
And we're at one twenty-five?
Uh, we're at twenty-five right now. So we can, we, we've been through eighteen, nineteen, probably we're gonna see it tomorrow. The only other comment that I have, and I just wanted to, uh, uh, expand on something that I haven't indicated, is, you know, the, I really believe that in the next ten years, we're gonna see more regional education. We're gonna see more entities coming in, and so, keep in mind, this is just for the LAC and the jail, we will be doing a separate agreement for nine oh one. Just, just to provide an opportunity for entities to come in under one of those, instead of needing to come in through one. So it'll provide, I think, more opportunities for us that way, especially on the nine oh one side.
Okay, so we, we could add, possibly add entities to one, one portion of the facility or the other with portion of the cost share.
Right, right.
That makes sense.
Would also make it easier for.
As the lead.
Right.
Hypothetically.
But that's, whatever, but I think, I think, you know, they might go, I don't know about something here, I was asking you, as far as when they do leave, I hope we did a good job of defining the financial commitment that they, that they're committed to for that process. To, to make sure we don't get a ton of it dropped.
Yeah, and that, I think that was the main thing, is, is we, we still have to allow each individual entity and therefore those decision-making processes. On what's best for their community when it comes to nine oh one or jail services, but at the same time, we can't hang ourselves with. Somebody leaving in the end of the year, if they give us, you know, reasonable timeframe, which is what, March thirty-first or?
That's right.
Whatever it is.
March thirty-first.
Yeah, then, then at least we have time to plan accordingly for the budgeting for next year, and I think that's reasonable. Plus, we're making sure people pay their bills on time, so that's a positive thing, too.
Anything else?
Well, that's all I have on this. I will see you guys again next month, I don't know, I'll make the first meeting, I hope we come around with a budget plot next month, so.
Always an exciting.
Oh, budget time's starting.
Yeah.
Exciting.
Rob, thank you for coming in tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. We will, uh, see you in one.
Sounds good. You guys have a good night.
You guys have a sad on the burn that?
Well, I, the only thing I have to add is that, it's, it always seems like it's ten percent of the population that, it matters ninety percent of your attention, so. You know, it seems like the ones that are here, that were here, are most out of common sense that are being punished for that ten percent, you know, and, and it's, it never seems to deal with.
That's what we see. Usually the case.
Thank you, Rob.
Kevin?
Uh, first of all, we, this is our, we're releasing an actual update, they're, they're not telling their. Last time I felt me when they're gonna be coming off, so I anticipated the end of this week, but I'm not sure.
I, I thought I saw a, a social media post in the journal that said tomorrow. But, um, statewide, we live, we limit restrictions, we're gonna be lifted tomorrow, so.
Okay.
That was very safe. Yeah.
So, we'll just play that.
Take it out, four inches.
Close to even all day.
At least that takes care of our.
Drop everywhere else.
One problem to the next.
Over high and they wonder, ah, no, nothing more than, uh, market issues.
Really, really.
So I have. I'll tell you a lot, put it on, we have market issues. We have, uh, six racks in.
Yeah, one three.
Okay, uh, secondly, there are the gravel for fixing our exhaust spots, I need, uh, rather than hauling all the way from Devils Lake, we found a pit, close enough to the pit before, but. It's a lot, a lot shorter haul for us. Uh, you want five dollars a yard, and I did finally get an estimate, it's only like two hundred and fifty yards, so it is gonna be less than two thousand dollars.
Elevation?
Um, no, not if it's less than two dollars.
Yes. Information.
But I did have one more thing to add, um, Brad, I've got a whole thing about doing our paper patches, and we went out, marked all those out. And I'm estimating that they're gonna cost about sixty thousand dollars. There's, uh, three places, one on the east where we replace that culvert, put that culvert in, we're gonna put a patch over that. Uh, the second one is over by Brock at the old Wagner Hardware Store.
Oh, okay.
Sunbeam shop, right from another approach to the back, and then, the last one is, um. Ramsey Three South Aurora, just in the, that area, it's, it's in the bad.
Yeah. Yeah, washes, well, not now, whenever it rains.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to have a motion to go ahead and do that project.
So moved.
It's moved?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead and improve that paper patch project?
About sixty dollars.
Yes, sixty thousand. Further discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you for your patience, appreciate it.
Oh, and update, uh, we're getting close to that, uh, mortar and culler to the bridges, uh, I think it's gonna happen fast, so, and. I need to get those ordered, cause of the six weeks, six, eight weeks delay of order, so. I might have to order those before it's approved, basically, but I'll just kinda keep it up, just be on, on where we're at there.
And you're still waiting down that street crossing standard times to wait in the street, huh? All right.
Up against it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin.
Next up, we have new business, uh, group site authorization.
Second.
We've been approved, or moved executive to approve the site authorization, that is for later, your baseball boosters, uh, at the bar. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A close same sign, motion carries. Uh, next item, we have, uh, Mr. Volga has to bring up a request on the Grand County Fair Board. To provide some funding, if we could fund in our, our, uh, maybe additional COVID money for bleachers.
So what they're asking is, they have a bleacher out there, but it's wooden, it's shot, and this would be right underneath the crow's nest, right to the left of the crow's nest, they have one of these. And they would like to replace it with this, and that'll take care of that spot.
They want enough, or?
Yep, they said one would be enough, you know, for this, I mean, it's for the small events they have. That go up there, you know, a hundred people usually when they do their verification and stuff. Um, yeah, we're having a big event, like the rodeo that's coming in, but they bring everything in. You don't have to supply anything, this would be for the local events.
And then, this would be something that's permanent, it's gonna stay at the, the, uh. Ramsey County Event Center, the Pearson Rodeo Grounds. Uh, I served before, uh, Chris Schubert was on that, that community, I served on the fair board for twelve years, I think it was. And we were, and those bleachers were wood benches, and about every three, four years, they would brought out, and, um, for safety reasons, we'd have to replace them, um.
We actually look for replacing the board more than what it would cost to replace this.
Move it. Second. It makes me, so.
Treat it longer than expected.
Want to, uh, round that number off, we wanna stick with the, uh, number that they have indicated on the.
Just approve it to three thousand.
Three thousand?
Yeah, just, just approve it to three thousand.
Pay for the tax.
Moving second, if they approve off, I have to. They already have an existing one that's.
They have one exactly like this one.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So we're just replacing the one wood.
Just replace the one wood one. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. What then, knowing that, come out of that?
Yep, I'll, I'll find her.
So, I mean, I'm sure they, thank you, uh, you know, the fair board, we need its, uh, limited money, uh, from Tony, and appreciate any additional help. Uh. And then, to visitors, delegations, announcements, uh, water tour, our annual water tour is gonna be on an in-person. Uh, June sixteenth, we'll leave from the Hosted Precision Acre Center, we'll do a, uh, registration there, we'll have a tour of that facility. And then we'll head on to our tour, grand, uh, commissioners throughout the state, as well as legislators are, uh, intend, uh, free of charge. Uh, approved through the ethics commission, so we had to do an educational, um, request through them, and they approved it, so. Um, legislators, commissioners, other elected officials, auditors, uh, whatever, uh, can, can that. And, uh, Water Education Foundation or the Joint Board will pick up the cost of that.
Sometimes when the bus breaks, then you get to ride on a school bus.
Yeah. Two years ago, our Commissioner Wakefield was on that tour, and our bus blew a transmission, uh, final lakes that he, uh. And, uh, fortunately, Devils Lake Schools had a bus and a driver available for us, and he was trying to come up and save the day.
It was nice, but it, it is actually a very good tour, so.
So, so what I wrote is, is that your, um, lunch and everything will be at, uh, some like park. And, uh, for that facility, um, one of the interesting, I think, I think it's interesting is, uh, we're gonna, uh, tour, or not tour, but we're, uh, have a discussion. On the Devils Lake Regiment Project, um, and which utilizes plant growth to help filter, uh, wastewater before it is released. Uh, taking nutrients out of our wastewater, uh, we have a fifty-eight acre facility, and it's the second largest in the world. And I think it's, uh, uh, interesting topic and discussion, where you're always talking about water and. And, uh, whether you're drinking water, or water quality in our lakes and streams and rivers, um, I think, uh, having a discussion about wastewater is fit. I'm not gonna tour the facility, uh, but we'll observe it from a distance.
You know, the, the smell of the lemonade plant has always been the first hint to spring for it.
That's right.
Well, and it, it's something that they harvest, um, and whether or not they utilize that, that byproduct for cattle. Tea or fertilizer or whatever, um.
Fertilizer, maybe.
It may be fertilizer, but on top of playing. Yeah.
You mean, if you deserve it, it's hard just to throw it out, it's still a good way to.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a good way to get away.
Good way, you know, to help filtration of wastewater without the additional of, uh, chemicals, so. Um, be an interesting discussion, so.
I should bring my, I should bring my son, I drove by the other day, and he was curious how that, how does that work? I couldn't explain it perfectly.
June, June sixteenth.
He didn't play the joke, no.
Yep. Is the day I'm not, that's all I have, I wanna thank all the commissioners and most of the candidates, thank, uh, Mr. Jager, Mr. Cummings, and Mr. Parks. Um, for sitting in the duration.
Yeah, you got the good one.
And wish Candy a happy birthday. I've been there for twenty-eight years of service to Ramsey County, this is the twenty-eighth anniversary, working for the county, so.
Was she at a post?
No, she's actually on vacation.
Yeah, she's on vacation.
So, yeah, she's well, well deserved vacation, and, uh, so wish her well, so, we're here on camera. Happy birthday, Candy.
Of course, cause she's on vacation watching this live.
As a very brief matter, of course, about the, uh, lunch that we talked about happening in July, although we approved having. Um, I was wondering which of the commissioners we wanted to have quarterback that, and I can volunteer, I have, uh. I, I could have three separate propane drills that I could bring to site, which I think should be enough, um, but as far as, as buying food and the drinks and the whatever.
Oh.
Well, yeah, but I just wanted to know kind of who, who do we want to charge for purchasing, make sure that we're not. I feel like you talked yourself right into it. Well, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do it because I appreciate the employees, I just wanna make sure.
Well, I'd like to help too.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, we could work with Candy and hammer it out, and we can delegate, who can go do what and take.
Oh, yeah, I know, we had discussed a, uh, a night at the park or something like that, the park, uh, facilities were, for those days, yeah. So, uh.
But we can do it out there.
We, we could do it, you know, maybe somewhere, last time we did it, we did it on the front lawn, I think it'd be better to do it somewhere different. Um, but, uh, we'll continue working on, on planning on it, so it doesn't get, doesn't get.
Yeah, we, someplace with a kitchen would be preferable, maybe, maybe we could talk to the fair people, use the fair building, maybe, something like that. Got some space there, plus if you had a rain, if you rain, you got inside, so you can sit down, or you can go outside. If it rains, when it rains, when it rains.
I would certainly, I'd love.
You'd look for a kitchen, which right there.
Right. I even wa-, I, I, I did my rain diligence, and I washed my vehicle, I probably, if you're for.
I'll check that.
Rainstorm that afternoon, but.
Twenty-third of July, I wrote it here, now, but, yeah.
Yeah, check, that'd be a good, be a good location.
But, yeah, so we'll, we'll figure it out, and kind of, kind of like a launch, right? Yeah, 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 I figured, you know. Cookies, brats, burgers, I'll be there cooking. I'm gonna put it with the ants, there.
I'll put it through.
So, anything, anything else?
Fish and can.
That'll be good, good, all right.
How you doing?
I do have an announcement.
Yeah.
Uh, so they're gonna back here to the building yesterday. We have brought a suspect into custody. We've determined that Ramsey County is technically the victim of that due to our lost productivity. I'm having Commissioner Pritt as the chairman of the county commission, will be the commission in person, are there any problems with that?
You, you mean like, the pardon to the law, the tur-, to the, to the crime, essentially? Correct. I think that's the most reasonable thing, is the chairman, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just wanna make sure everybody's up to speed on that, appreciate that, but, yeah, that's fine.
It, it was an interesting one yesterday.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I never got a text message about there being a threat, I got the all-clear text, and I was like, what in the world?
Yeah, I never got the original text, and then I heard it on the news, and then I got the all-clear text.
Yeah, and I got the all-clear text, and I had no idea what was going on.
So, yeah, it was, uh, maybe, you know, and something we've never experienced, um. You know, Roger's been here thirty-plus years, and he's never been a part of one, um, something that. I think lessons were, were learned to, we could improve our response to, um, both as an employee side of things, um. Uh, notification type of things, law enforcement things, um, all, all the way around it was, I, I, I think, uh. It was very much, uh, we, we'll, we'll chalk it up for an after-action report and, and look at improving some of our response capabilities to such a threat. Um, and certainly think all those that responded and, and, uh, you know. The quick response of, of law enforcement to get somebody in custody as quickly as they did.
Absolutely fantastic.
Yeah, so, um, you know, things went, went off smoothly, uh, fortunately, it wasn't, uh, worst-case scenario. Uh, fortunately, it wasn't, uh, worst-case scenario, yeah.
Pretty safe, so, most important for it.
Everything was safe, and, but, so, uh, anything else?
I'm from my end.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So, no. Three in the journey? Seven twenty-one P M?
Yeah, I heard move that today, how, how they, how they missed, how they missed.